All right, I'll call the order, the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, November 5th, 2019. If all could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. All right, Carrie, would you like to formally introduce Phil?
I want everybody to meet Phil King, he's our newest Planning Commissioner, replacing Marcus Lane. Do you want to tell the Planning Commissioners a little bit about yourself and how you ended up on the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I've lived in Port Orchard for thirty, no forty-five years, from Southern California. Young age, moved up here, went to school here, graduated here, raised a family here, have seven children. Live downtown on Perry, right above the Blue Goose, I tell everybody, so everybody knows where it's at. And just saw a lot of things going on, a lot of things happening, and growth and development everywhere. And was concerned about our community, and want to see our community grow in a healthy way. So, when I discussed this with the Mayor, he said, "I may have a place for you, that you can plug into." So, here I am.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks.
And I think, as you were discussing before the meeting, I think that everybody heard that Kathleen has asked to step down at the end of the year because she just has too many responsibilities on her plate right now. And I think the Mayor has made a selection, but I don't know if that's formal yet, so I'll let the Mayor make that announcement when that happens. But, because we'll have then two new, fairly new, and a new Planning Commissioner starting next year, we may be trying to have some training, some educational stuff going on, and we'll invite everyone, if we can set that up. And as I, as I said to Phil, and this goes for everybody, you know, if there's stuff that, you know, you want to talk with us about, one-on-one, ever, about what's going on in the city, or concerns you have, or ideas you have, things that we don't really get to talk about one-on-one in a Commission meeting, you know, just come on by, or just give us a call, or just say you just want to sit down with us for an hour and talk about stuff. Because we can do that outside of a Planning Commission meeting at any time, and we'd love to hear from you. So, please come by, and we will try to have some additional educational opportunities next year for everyone.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, business item number three, audience comments that are not on the agenda.
Stephanie, I'm sorry, is your microphone on?
It is, but I'll try to help speak better.
Thank you, you bet. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, could you step up to the microphone? Oh, that's okay. That's if you were speaking, for whatever, here it is.
Hi, I'm, I used to be a resident of Port Orchard, now I'm in Belfair, this is my wife. Anyways, uh, her name's, we got married two weeks ago, doesn't matter, anyways, um. Is City Council in a paid position, or is it volunteer?
City Council.
So, we're not City Council.
What are you guys?
We're the Planning Commission.
Is Planning Commission paid?
And it's 100% volunteer.
Volunteer.
Jeez, really?
Mm-hmm.
Wow, very cool, that's last ask, what's City Council, then?
Paid. I believe they get like a stipend?
Yeah, they're paid.
They do.
Yeah.
They're not paid hourly.
So, what do you guys, what's your responsibilities?
We're to be the voice of the people.
The Planning Commission advises the City Council on planning and zoning issues.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, when we come forward with changes to the zoning code, or with the city's comprehensive plan, or other long-range plans for the city, it comes before the Planning Commission, they hold public hearings, and they're the advisory board. They don't make the decisions, but they serve, as they said, as the citizens' voice.
Okay.
So, as residents of the community, they take all these matters under consideration from staff, and then they make recommendations to the City Council, and how they believe the Council should act.
Okay, very cool, so, were you guys involved in the fast ferry tax thing that came through? And how's that going? Is there a, I mean, a Port Orchard fast ferry soon? Do you have any of those with that?
We didn't have any.
I don't think we've dealt with.
Yeah, that's not under our jurisdiction.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. All right, that's all.
But we love having people come, no one ever comes.
I know, this is exciting.
Yay!
We thought you were here for the public hearing, and I'm like, wow, housekeeping amendments is exciting.
Now, the fast ferry is operated by Kitsepp Transit. And so, that, when it went out for vote of the people, that was, that funding initiative was to fund Kitsepp Transit's development and operation of the fast ferry system. If you're talking about the catamaran, the fast ferry system, yeah. Southworth.
So.
Yeah. I don't, does anyone know how fast that will be?
No.
I heard 2020 sometime.
Yeah, that's what I heard, too.
But I don't have a hard date.
Do you know how long it will take, then, to go from Southworth to Seattle? I don't know.
The trip?
Yeah.
Twenty minutes?
Probably twenty.
Twenty, thirty minutes. It's really fast. You can probably find information on the Kitsepp Transit webpage. You're welcome. Thank you for coming.
All right, seeing no other audience comments for items not on the agenda, we will move to business item number four, which is approval of the minutes from September 3rd, 2019.
And I just wanted to mention that at the last meeting, you all had asked me to move the minutes up from the place where they've always been at the end, so that if there was anything to discuss before considering items that had previously been on the agenda, that you could look at them again. So, I have moved them up, if you, if you still want them there, we can keep them there, that's why it's there.
Thank you.
There's enough of us that we can, we have a quorum, don't we?
Yes, you're a quorum.
Okay.
Um, hold on, one, two. Present this evening, that were also present September, there are only three Planning Commissioners, so I believe we will have to table this, is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay, we will table the September 3rd, 2019 meeting minutes to the next Planning Commission meeting. And business item number five, we'll start with 5A, Carrie, please.
Okay, so, do you want me to give a brief discussion of, we don't, we don't seem to have anybody here for the public hearing, so I will just go through the housekeeping amendments. The housekeeping amendments, you saw at the last Planning Commission meeting as a discussion-only item. These are all of the items that we kind of looked over in the last year, in our new zoning code, where we saw, okay, we admitted this, this was in conflict with another section of our code, we've made another change somewhere else in the code, and now we need to catch up over here in the zoning code. So, this is housekeeping, it's cleaning everything up, all the errors or omissions that we've noticed over the past year, we wanted to just go ahead and put this in one minor correction summary. None of these are significant, none of these make major changes that would rise to the level of an issue-by-issue serious discussion, although we are certainly, you're certainly welcome to go through any one of these for a discussion at any time. But, I think we didn't have a lot of discussion on these individual items at the last one. We answered a number of questions about why are we doing this or that, I think we went through them. Did anyone have any questions about any of the housekeeping items? And I can go through those individually. Nick had kind of given a long summary about the entire housekeeping amendment package at the last meeting.
Carrie, I was not at, I was not able to be at the last meeting, is there roughly how many housekeeping items were there?
Um, in terms of a number?
Yeah, roughly. Well, if I should say, yeah, just give me a quick thirty-second summary, or if it's...
Um, I'd say we probably have, we probably have about twenty-five items, and some of them are repeats. Like, if we saw that we forgot to add, like, oh, this is allowed in the greenbelt zone, if we didn't add it here, and we, that probably means we forgot to add it in several places, so I'm counting that as one amendment. But, because you weren't here at the last meeting, do you want me to go through the complete summary?
If you would.
Yeah.
Just, I don't want to chew up anybody's time.
No, that's okay. In that case, what's probably easiest for me is to go through the summary document, which is behind the ordinance.
Okay.
Yep, that's it. One of the things that we noticed was that in our zoning code, we didn't have a definition of principal building, even though elsewhere in the, in the code, we referred to it, as in what you, you know, are required, where you can put the principal building on the lot, what the setbacks are for the principal building, and that kind of thing, so we didn't have a definition. And so, that, of course, came up, and so, we've provided a definition of what both a principal building and an accessory building are. And then we clarified what the, the meaning of facade was, just because it wasn't clear to a couple of applicants, we tried to make that more clear as to what that meant. The next one down, application procedures, this is something that had actually been prepared before we adopted the new code by the City Attorney, they had wanted that to be a separate amendment to address the process requirements for application review, project review, and public notice, all the timeline requirements and submittal requirements. And for some reason, that got left out, and we just wanted to go ahead and include that in there, since that was something the AWC wanted us to include, trying to get all cities to be consistent in how they state these requirements. So, we've put that in there. The next one is in our building type zoning matrix, and I'm on page eight now. We had accidentally left out the building types of townhouse and apartment from the neighborhood mixed-use zone as allowable building types, so we put that in.
Okay.
We had an inconsistency between the two sections on design standards, which are 2032 and 2127, about the maximum blank wall requirements, and so, we went with the more restrictive, which is what was intended. So, all through here, the maximum blank wall area, fifteen feet. On page 11, um, and, and I wanted to make sure everybody understood the difference. Attached, attached houses are two homes on separate lots with one wall. They are in separate lots, but the way we defined it is that's an attached house and not a townhouse. Townhouses do have their own lot, but it's a row, and it's, it's a series of homes, each one on their own lot, but they're attached on both sides. So, with an attached house, you only have one wall that touches another. So, we wanted to distinguish townhouses from attached houses by saying that what you have here, it's a building type that has three or more dwelling units, where each unit is separated by a common sidewall, to make that clear, that when you have just two, that's an attached house.
Okay.
Not a townhouse.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions so far? On page 14, neighborhood mixed use was always meant to be a low-density commercial zone, where you have houses, duplexes, shopfront stores, things like that, you know, office, home-business-type uses, a low-density walkable neighborhood with a few light commercial uses, it wasn't meant for apartments. And so, that was taken out of the neighborhood mixed use, it was not ever meant to allow high-density, high-tall apartment buildings, so we took that out. On page 16, we corrected the minimum lot size for the R1 zone, except for cottage court developments. Cottage court developments are those, are those developments that have, you could have your house on a very small lot, just about big enough to contain the house itself, surrounded by a large, common, open space. But that's a very unique development type, and generally, when you have a single-family house, you're going to have an individual lot with no common open space, so 1,200 square feet is not going to be big enough to give you a house and the required setbacks. So, we wanted to make it clear that in the R1 zone, our lowest-density zone, your, your lot size is generally going to be between 5,000 and 6,000 square feet, except for cottage court. And then you can have a lot as small, as small as 1,200 square feet. Accessory buildings in the RMU zone, and I think we also, yeah, we needed, we needed to make that clear in other zones as well. I'm not sure why we didn't think about this, people need sheds, and other things like that, and storage units. And we, we just didn't think about that when we did this, so we made it clear that in the mixed-use zones, you can have accessory buildings that are appropriate to the use and the type of building that is your principal building. So, in here, starting in page 19, accessory buildings are allowed. And that also applies, page 22, commercial mixed-use accessory buildings. Page 25, accessory buildings. Page 27, GMU, accessory buildings. Commercial corridor, accessory buildings, page 30. Commercial heavy, same thing, page 33. Industrial flex, same thing, page 36. And that's about it, we just, for some reason, it went over our heads until somebody was like, hey.
I want a shed.
Yeah, I, I have a nursery and I need sheds, so, we thought about that then. We, we had, as you know, we adopted a self-storage overlay district in the last year that really narrowed down where new self-storage facilities could go within the city, and we had a definition in the code describing what that meant for that overlay district, and what it meant, you know, where you could locate new self-storage facilities. And one word in the definition appeared to make it unclear to some people about what that meant, so, we took out the word "and."
What page are you on for this?
This is on page 38. Because it appeared to be, to mean to some people that it was only permitted in areas within the overlay district and in zones, where it was permitted outright, or as a conditional use, in the land use table. But we meant, it has to be within the overlay district and nowhere else.
Yes.
So, we wanted to make it very clear, so we took that one word out, and we believe that resolves the issue. On the next page, exceptions, that applies to design standards. Actually, this chapter does apply in the light industrial or heavy industrial zones, it simply doesn't apply to certain building types. If you're putting in a, a wellhouse, or something like that, you're, you're exempt from having design standards applied to that, but if you are building a facility that's going to be visible from the street, that is, just happens to be in the light industrial zone, we do want you to comply with certain standards for landscaping and setbacks, and other things that, that are going to preserve the aesthetics of the site, so, we, we removed that. Build-to-zone, this is the requirement in the code where a certain percentage of your building needs to be within the, the front set, the front, what am I trying to think of, what am I trying to say here? There's a minimum and a maximum setback from the right-of-way. And so, in order to get a feeling that you are not too far setback from the street, we want everything to be built as close as possible in certain zones, on certain street types. Build as far, as close as possible to the sidewalk, we're trying to discourage front yard parking, and to, to create kind of a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood. And so, in these zones, you have to have a certain amount of your building facade that's located in the build-to-zone. And so, a certain amount of the building, a certain percentage has to be there. But, you know, the fact is, there are some sites that are really constrained. Some of them only have access through an easement, or they're a flagpole lot, you know, they, they have a narrow access, they can only get in that way. Some of them might have, be on a lot that's in an existing development, they have a stormwater pond in front, what can you do? So, we put this exception in, this is on page 40, where the director can look at an individual application and say, yeah, okay, it makes sense that on this, in this particular case, you're not going to be able to meet the build-to-zone requirements, and he can reduce them. So, we just wanted to make it a little easier for people that have a little unusual site. Mobile home regulations, the city does not allow what is defined as a mobile home. Manufactured homes, which meet the state requirements for a single-family home, are allowed. Mobile homes are only allowed in the sense of a job site, work office kind of thing, and so, that now falls under temporary uses, when those are allowed. And so, we just didn't, we failed to delete this section when we updated the code, and so, we, we've just gone ahead and deleted that. Page 40, this is another thing that was prepared by the AWC for subdivisions, it's a form documentation process, they just want to make sure that we have all the signature blocks, legalese, I don't know why, some of these things, but they want exact wording for all of these things, they're, they're trying to make them consistent between all of the cities that the AWC provides service and legal representation for, okay. We'll put them in, and we should have put them in when we adopted our code, and we didn't, so now, we're including them. On page 46, non-motorized circulation and design requirements. That was not actually meant to apply to residential development outside of subdivisions. When you're coming in with a plat, and you're developing ten acres, and you're putting in a public street, and maybe you're requiring a stub for future development connections and things like that. So, when you come in, let's say with, you're, you're building a few townhomes, and you're putting in a private street, and it's dead-ending, you don't need to meet these requirements, but we wanted to make it clear that, you know, it could, because it wasn't clear, so we needed, we needed to make it clear that you are not responsible for meeting those requirements in our city code, if that's what you're coming in with. So, we felt that we needed to just make that, put that in here, so that no one would feel that that applied to them. Okay, um, and again, looking at things that need to comply with residential design guidelines, not really with design guidelines, design guidelines. We had someone come in to, they wanted to put a gazebo in their backyard, and, um, we actually started to think about how they could, they could comply with design guidelines, no, no. That was never the intention of it. So, we put in here saying that, you know, things like pavilions, gazebos, stages, things that are open-air ornamental, down at the park, we're not applying design guidelines to things like that. That's not the intention of it whatsoever, so we just wanted to go ahead and put that in there. So, that would apply in any zone, really, where someone is coming forward with something like that, it's, this is not the intention of it. On page 48, 49, the townhome driveway standards were just moved to another section, so they were deleted from 2127, 340, we thought it made more sense to put them into the townhome section. And we talked earlier about where there were conflicts between, between requirements in the design standards between 2127 and 2139, that also, as well as facade length, that applied to the minimum facade transparency requirements for residential buildings. And here, we went ahead and allowed 20% minimum for residential buildings, that was, that was a conflict that we had, and we thought that was reasonable. So, that makes them consistent. Landscape plans, and that's on page 56. We had a bit of pushback from people when we tried to require qualifications for people who could prepare a landscape plan, because so far, you know, we've received a lot of our landscape plans literally drawn on the backs of napkins, you know, here's some bushes, my brother knows how to put in sprinklers, that kind of thing. And we're trying to get something that's a little bit, a little bit better designed, that has a better chance of having landscaping, particularly when it's, it's replanting trees, succeed over the long term. And to get something, to get plants in that we know are more water-wise, that have a better chance of succeeding in our climate, will not grow to have roots that interfere with sidewalks or other public utilities, and basically are going to be compatible with the development that's going in at maturity. And so, we did want to try to have more professional landscape plans submitted with our plats and commercial developments. But we wanted to make it as broad as possible, we didn't want to exclude anybody who should be considered a qualified licensed professional. So, we added a Washington certified professional landscape designer from the American Professional Landscape Designers Washington chapter into that as well, we were asked to do that, and we did. Design standards, we simply added additional terms into the list of building types to which they apply. For some reason, we did not put all the different residential building types into this list, so we made sure we included all of them, both types of duplexes, cottage courts. Now, we're up to page 58. We just revised the residential garage configuration standards table, so that we had consistent symbology and numerals in here, and we made sure that our lot sizes made sense in here, and revised, we revised our attached lot sizes so that they also made sense, because I don't know how we got 74 feet in here, honestly, we weren't sure, that didn't make sense. Oh, and then, the new section, this is on page 60, and this is the last one. This is where we moved the driveway standards for front-loaded townhomes, that's part of the townhome standards, and that, we just felt that made more sense than just sticking them in there under circulation, because that wasn't where anybody would expect to find them, so it was confusing. So, that sums them up.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any, any questions about any of that?
I'd like to move to recommend that the City Council approve the Title 20 Housekeeping Ordinance as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, Carrie?
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to business item 5C.
Potential rezones, this is a discussion item only. This went to the Land Use Committee, it's kind of a reversal from how we usually do it, we usually bring things to you first, but they were there, and this, a day before, and so, we wanted to run a couple of things by them, just because we had the opportunity. I'll tell you what they thought about it in a second, but we wanted to present these ideas to you as well, to see what you thought about a couple, we've had a few citizens come forward and just say that, hey, we're not real thrilled about our zoning for certain reasons, and we would appreciate it if the city would consider a rezone. We don't really want to come forward with a formal rezone request until we've sounded out our elected officials in our Planning Commission, to see if you guys would be supportive of it or not. So, that's why I'm just bringing it forward for an informal discussion at this time. We have three, right now. We have the Lundberg property, which is the first one, and this is down off of Bethel. And this is a single-family house, which I think it's an older home, it's on about an acre of property, and they're on septic, they have, I think they have water, but they don't, they don't have sewer down there at all. And so, this is a, this is a family that's had it for about fifty years, and their family, I believe, the, the father died, and so, the kids are wanting to sell this, but what they're finding out is because it's commercial mixed use, the prospective sellers are finding they can't get financing, because it's considered non-conforming. So, if it burned down, they would not be able to rebuild it. And so, this makes sense, in a way, to the staff, because right now, where it is, it doesn't have the utilities to support commercial development, it's set back by one lot from Bethel, it's not right on the commercial corridor, and the lot right in front of it has actually been purchased, I believe, or is in the process of being purchased by Kitsepp County for a stormwater facility. So, it's not likely that this is going to be part, right on the frontage of Bethel, as part of any... as part of any overall development right there. We don't want to rezone it residential, however, because that would be spot zoning residential in a commercial corridor where everything around it is going to stay commercial. So what we suggested is a rezone to be PMU, Business Professional Mixed Use, because you can have single-family homes there. And you can have offices. You can have medical office. You can have other types of commercial development. So that would allow them to keep their home. And if, not to keep it, but to sell it to new people. And it would be conforming so they could get conventional financing. And then if, down the road, this becomes a commercial area that does get redeveloped, it's eligible for commercial office development. And that was acceptable to the owners and the sellers. So we just thought we'd bring that forward and see what you thought here. The next one, and I'm going to say this wrong because I've actually heard this from the people on the road as malign and meline. So I'm not sure how to say it. I'm going to call it malign. On the line. Off of Highway sixteen. This road dead-ends. It's very substandard. It's behind lows. It doesn't have, it doesn't really have services down here at all. People are on wells. They're unseptic. A number of years ago, they all asked to be zoned commercial because they thought commercial development big-time was coming in down here and that would make their property values really sore. And they thought that would be a great investment for them. That hasn't happened. And these are all single-family houses and manufactured homes down here. And so, what's happening now is that people are wanting to improve their homes, repair their homes, expand their homes. And in some cases, we have people who want to subdivide. And it can't be done. Because now, it's not zoned for single-family homes. All of these are non-conforming. And so now, the neighbors, we have kind of a, we have probably a majority of the neighbors wanting to rezone back to residential. We have a couple of holdouts who aren't too thrilled about that and want to stay commercial. But as I understand it, those, the residential neighbors are working on the commercial neighbors to talk them into it. We've asked them to do a community petition because we are not going to do spot zoning. Your residential and your commercial. So we have about, I think, nine or ten properties here that this would involve. And so, it makes sense probably to go with neighborhood mixed-use here because we, we don't see this becoming commercially viable for quite a long time. This road isn't going through. The creek runs through here. We really don't think anyone's coming in here on this road to bring in water and sewer at great expense, to upgrade this road, to buy all these houses out. The access is not here. And what people are looking for, I think, at this point is just basically to be able to improve their properties. And we have a couple of people, it's actually a couple of people whose husbands have died. And they want to be able to sell the houses. And to be able, and one of them wants to be able to subdivide just so their son can move in and build a house and take care of them. So we're sympathetic to that. We understand that. And so, it may make sense to go to neighborhood mixed-use, which would allow single-family homes, but retain some commercial value, which may help placate the couple of neighbors who really want commercial value. So it will retain a commercial zoning. So that's where we are with this one.
Does that parallel Highway sixteen? Is that the road right off of sixteen? I'm not familiar with that road. Or do you access it off of Sidney?
No, you actually have to come in, like, through the county. Yeah, you don't really have a direct, you don't really have a direct access. Or you have to come in from the county and drive up through an easement and get on there. It's, it's...
I've actually been back there because I was looking along a while back for property for sale. It's beautiful back there, but it is a very roundabout way to get to it. But where she was saying the creek is and all that, it's beautiful. But there's, you have to go through people's properties to get to property that's for sale, basically.
So on the south side of Cedric, then, on the low side of Cedric?
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's a map in your packet at the back of the staff report. And it's, yeah, the access, the road itself is not improved where it could ever, where it could serve for a commercial road or even for a residential subdivision without being considerably improved. And right now, it's not even a direct access into the property.
Okay. I see it.
It looks like it is, but it isn't.
You have to get it off of Dogwood.
Right.
Okay.
This says no outlet.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And then the last one in the packet is the JWJ property. This one is close to downtown. And it's kind of odd. This is kind of a thumb sticking out from the city into the urban growth area. This is, if you see, this is all unincorporated cities surrounding it. And it backs up to our, our public facilities area out there in the park. And it's, it's very steeply sloped. And the reason that they are asking for a higher residential classification going from R-two to R-three is so they can build apartments because it slopes very steeply down. They don't think they can get much in there if they're kind of limited to townhomes or duplexes, things like that. They don't want to do single-family, which kind of makes sense. And so, they're looking for something that will give them a return on their money from having to take in a road and other utilities into a very constrained site. Also, when we rezoned this area, the original, when we did the new zoning classifications last year and everybody in the city got rezoned, this was originally R-twelve. And so, it would have corresponded to apartment zoning. It was deliberately downzoned to R-two because we, we looked at the constraints of the site. And we honestly didn't think it was suitable for apartment zoning. So that's kind of a contrast to this. We, they're asking for something that we deliberately took down because we didn't see how they would really get apartments in here without a lot of trouble and expense. But they say, no, we can do it. You know, we just need to get the density in here and we can make it financially profitable. So that's what they're asking for. So having said all this, having just explained the facts to you, I can tell you what the land use committee said yesterday. They were supportive of the Lundberg and the malign proposals. You know, saying this, this is only three members of the council. And so, this will go to work-study next week to be discussed. They were not especially supportive of the JWJ proposal. They felt that this is surrounded by the unincorporated county, which have, you know, some of this, there's nothing out here. There's no services. They're surrounded by fairly rural land, single-family homes. There's no other apartments out here. There's a lot of critical areas out here. This is not what, I would say, this is not what at least two of the three people that reviewed this on council felt was appropriate for this area. And so, I think, I'm not speaking for them, but from what I heard in the land use committee, they were not supportive of, of this one. So just to put that out there.
Carrie, could you refresh my memory? I'm having a hard time envisioning where this property is located.
Oh, gosh, glasses.
I know.
This one is off of Olney. So it's, it's near the cemetery and near the park. And it's near our public facility site out there. See, we don't have a zoning map in here, do we? No, of course not.
Is the blue the cemetery?
I think the gray.
The gray is all the unincorporated county. So this sticks out. It's like a little thumb of the city sticking out.
Wow, how did that happen? Crazy.
I don't know.
That's before I was here. Okay, this is going to be a waste of our treatment plant down here. Understood. Thank you. It looks big.
It is big. It's...
Yeah, but it's like...
It's, it goes, it goes pretty much straight down from fourth.
Like, I was amazed they built houses on that side of the road.
I believe that they got this at kind of a bargain. Somebody bought it a few years ago, like, ooh, like, is it a tax sale or something? And then they, they looked at it and like, I don't think we can actually pay to develop it, what it's going to need. But this is, this is an investor who kind of specializes in buying up property and developing it that maybe for a smaller developer, it wouldn't be possible. So they can put more money into it.
Carrie, what would you like from the planning commission this evening?
It's not coming formally before the council at any point. And it's, it would go to the hearing examiner in any case because the planning commission doesn't hear rezone requests unless there's a comp plan amendment involved. And none of these would involve comp plan amendments. But we would like to give your feedback to the council in time for work-study. Just because some of these, especially the one on Lundberg, we might fold into a larger rezone if, if the, if the county buys the public facilities property next to it. It's also possible that the city may buy a piece of it. So we may want to rezone that into public facilities. We may take this as part of a little, a small area-wide rezone. But this one, we weren't sure about. And we would just like to know what, as citizens, you think about this. All three of them, actually. We would just like to have some feedback for work-study.
Can I ask a question about the apartments? Is, do you know, can we ask to find out? Is this going to be like affordable housing? I mean, is this...
No. I have not, we don't have a site plan. But I think with the amount of site work that's going to go into this, the amount of money that will have to be spent, the whole road, I mean, if you, you can see where the road comes in. That road is going to have to be improved all the way in. This, this isn't going to be cheap to develop.
No. Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know if that's really going to help our situation with our town with housing at all. I mean, you're, with what you do, you may know a little bit more about that than I do.
None of my clients would be able to afford apartments here, I can tell you that.
So that's sort of a concern. And, and, and so, I know here on Horstman, the cemetery's here. And what is right next to it? I mean, is it just empty greenery there in the gray? Or is that part of the cemetery too, to the right side of the potential spot?
You're talking about directly adjacent to it?
Yeah.
I think, I think directly adjacent to it, there's a single-family house on that property.
Oh, okay. Well, I wonder how they'd feel having a huge development in their backyard.
Yeah, no, this, this is just in the talking stage. And no one's come in because they're wanting a rezone. They can't come in with apartments right now. So this is all in the talking stage. We haven't seen a site plan. They haven't designed the site. They don't want to put money into it until they know if it's even, you know, the zoning even allows it. Yeah.
The creek runs down there too, right? Into the treatment system. Looks like it would run right through that property.
The creek doesn't run through that site. I don't believe...
Looks like it's just to the other side of it.
Yeah, I think it's just on the other side. They, they would be concentrating the development on the west side. As, as close to the west side as possible. Put the parking and, and the townhomes up there and be leaving the, the east side as, as undisturbed as they can.
On the top of the hill, essentially.
Yeah.
And then it just drops off.
Yeah.
Down to the creek. Yeah.
Increased erosion, for sure.
Any other members of planning commission want to fish to voice your opinions?
The only thing that I find odd on the Lundberg property is, so we would just be changing the zoning for that one parcel. So then it would...
Well, at this time, if you see the, the piece that surrounds it on two sides, that's the piece that's being bought by the county for the storm, the stormwater facility. And that's what we would have to be rezoning, public facilities anyway. And what the mayor said in the land use meeting yesterday was, we're thinking of buying a piece of that ourselves for some public facilities purpose. So we would then be initiating a city rezone. We may as well take all of it if we're going to do it all at once. So it won't, all of it won't stay CMU. But I understand what you're saying. It would be taking something back to a different zoning, although not taking it back to residential.
Right.
We didn't want to do that. That would definitely be a spot zone if we took it back to residential.
Myself, I, I would be comfortable with the Lundberg and the malign properties. Not so much with the JWJ.
That's how I feel too, exactly.
I think JWJ would have to give us more information about what their thoughts are and how they could do it.
I agree with that as well. I feel like it's just a big bubble and so many, there's so many things that could go so many ways.
I'm not ready to say carte blanche, they can't do it. But I think we need more information with what knowledge we know of that, topography.
Would they be open to that, you think?
Must have some vision.
You know, I think it's, it's one of those catch-twenty-two things where people are like, well, we don't want to spend money unless we know we can do it. But we don't want to say you can do it unless you spend some money to tell us what it's going to look like. So I don't know.
We need to have a concept of some sort.
I think that's kind of where we've been at too. You know? So, okay, this, this is really helpful. Because I, I'm hearing, you're mirroring the staff's concerns, which are mirroring the council's concerns. So I, we're hearing the same things from everyone. So I think that's really helpful. That back to Nick tomorrow and pass that on to council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then, we'll move on to business item five C. Discussion, discussion recommendation continued from September for the tree canopy significant tree code.
Trees.
I said specifically, I didn't want to vote on it without you there.
Well, you're, you're a tree person.
I think this might be the third month we're talking about trees.
Yeah, I know. I know, I saw the look on your, on the face of the staff. And I was like, ah, I don't want to vote on this without Stephanie here.
Did, I know that, I don't think Phil got the email from you, Dave, because he may not have been on your planning commissioner list.
Yeah, but I know he's looking at the hard copy.
Everybody got the hard copy. Did everybody else get the email from Dave a couple of days ago about his suggested, his comments, his questions, his concerns and suggested changes to the tree code?
There's a few.
To say it mildly.
I have, was it only an email form versus in our packet?
Yes. And then what you, I have, it's printed, okay. What, what you have here in the strikeout underline are his proposed redline changes in his comments in the margins. And then Nick went through it and made responses to Dave. And he's, Nick made some changes, so confusing. Nick made some changes to Dave's changes and explained why. And what I did is I printed out a copy. This is what you have dated eleven-four, twenty nineteen. This is a proposed compromise in a clean version, which takes what you have in your packet in a clean version and puts in what Nick thought we could compromise on Dave's suggestions. So you could compare these side by side and see if you could kind of live with that. So now, you have two versions to look at. You have, actually, you have three versions. No, you have the Dave version. You have what was in your packet, which is what we looked at in September. And then you have, I'll call it the Nick version, which is kind of half Dave and half packet. I'm sorry.
The one dated eleven-four.
Yes. Yeah.
I'm going to work through this.
Eleven-four is the compromised.
Nick's response is blue. Am I right?
Yes.
And you're pink?
And I'm DB-one, he's in B sixteen, R-five, fifteen.
DB, Dave and Nick.
Dave versus Nick, fine.
Oh, my gosh, okay. Breaking down the code there.
He's pink, Nick's blue.
Yes. I'm okay with that.
And I don't want to, I don't want to speak for you, Dave. So you might want to give everyone a bit of a summary of what you're thinking. I know where you're coming from. But you might want to summarize your concerns for the planning commission unless the chair had a different approach to this.
Yeah, I really didn't think about it very much globally. I was kind of going point by point. But I think the part that sat the least comfortable, that I was least comfortable with was the, it wasn't particularly equitable on their, on their ratios. They had that scale of eighteen to twenty-two, twenty-two to twenty-eight and twenty-eight-plus sized trees equalling one or two or three trees you had to plant. But there was no discussion about is one tree truly equal to three trees? And so, I did a little bit of math. And whether you do it by area trunk or the diameter, multiple different ways of doing it, I think I used a twenty-two through twenty-eight.
You're looking at page four, right? Just...
I know, I'm going off the memory.
I think you're on page four.
Yeah, okay, yeah. If you look at page four, you see there, table twenty-one, two-nine, zero-four-zero. So if you have a twenty-two to twenty-eight inch diameter tree that you're going to take off your property, you had to plant one replacement tree. But the replacement trees were three inches in diameter. It doesn't, didn't sound very equitable to me. That you can take down a twenty-eight inch tree and put up a three-inch tree and it's considered a net loss of zero.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Yeah. Should see what Nick said here. Should see what Nick said here on those. And then the, to make the inequity even more difficult, um, where it says to incentivize tree retention, every significant tree that is retained shall reduce the required number of replacement trees by three. So, if you did an example where there's eight trees on a lot that were over thirty-six inches, you cut down six of them, retained two of them, you got credit for two, that means six. That means there was no penalty. So, there's nothing there that makes any kind of incentive.
To wanna keep any of the existing trees?
Right. Uh, well, to keep two of them.
Or-
If you cut down six, there's no penalty for cutting down six of eight trees.
Yeah, six is one.
And eight trees can actually make a bit of a habitat, two trees not so much.
Not so much.
So, and that's kinda where I was asking, I think, at the last meeting is, what's the need for this? What are we trying to do with this? Are we trying to be friendly to development? Are we trying to be developed to ecology? Are we trying to be aesthetic?
For an answer.
All of the above. Because what we had, okay, when I worked here, mm, it's almost fifteen years ago now, we had a tree retention code in place that was impossible to implement because it required that you replaced every tree at at least one to one. That's impossible. Because when you're talking about developing a shopping center or a small lot subdivision, you can't do it. And so, it wasn't enforced, which is probably not legal. But it wasn't enforced because you couldn't do it. And so, that code went away. And then nothing came back to replace it except for the significant tree retention code. But we had a tree canopy code and a tree retention code that didn't work. And so, we do need to have something in here that recognizes, we live in an urban area. Our intention is not to keep everything as it is. We want to keep an urban tree canopy percentage. We can't keep what we have now in, in the areas that are developing from rural into urban. We can't do that. But we can try to, to keep no net loss of significant trees. We can try to keep a reasonable, reasonable percentage of urban canopy. Um, and we can try to incentivize developers to keep those significant trees and replant appropriate trees that will, over time, restore the tree canopy. But we can't get people, if you cut down a twenty-inch tree, they can't replant a twenty-inch tree. That's also not possible.
No.
Yeah.
But one twenty-inch tree replaced with a three-inch tree doesn't sound at all equitable. And at the very beginning, it says, um, something about no net loss. Where was?
Yeah, in the tree. It's crossed out, so it's hard to see.
Okay, so that part disappeared, that there-
Now, where are you at? I'm sorry?
Number two, paragraph number two.
On, on which-
It said, "To achieve a goal of no net loss of significant trees throughout the city." That was in the original verbiage.
Okay, I wanna make sure I'm looking at the right version.
Front page, I'm looking at my, my edited version. Cause you can see the crossed out.
Oh, now I see it, okay. Took me a minute.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, basically, it sounds like you solved that problem by taking out the no net loss.
I don't think it will be possible to have no net loss, but we can require a replacement.
Understand that, but I also, once again, I go back to that ratio. A twenty-eight inch tree replaced with a three-inch tree isn't gonna-
Well, the Planning Commission can suggest that replacement trees be a larger caliper or a larger diameter. And caliper, caliper is used when you're, when, and you had asked about why caliper instead of measuring diameter at breast height, DBH. Because when you have a small tree, um, and you know, you're talking about six to eight feet, you're having a, the trunk come up, if you wanna call it that, and then it's branching out at a low height. It's not at breast height, it's branching out into multiple branches or multiple trunks at a low height. So, that's why they do caliper. That's just the way they do it.
So, how is a caliper measured versus a diameter?
What you mean?
So, if you're, so what's the exact, what is the specific difference between a caliper and a diameter?
Well, we're using, um, the, the definition that you gave us from Paulsbo. We did put that into the definitions. So, we added that. Cause that seemed reasonable to put in, because we didn't have a definition and-
Right.
So, yeah, we added that.
So, if we get back to the ratios. In that table twenty-point-one, two-nine-point-zero-four-zero. They had two suggestions and two different alternatives, um, which is, I actually numbered page ten. Was at the end of the section. Where I have comments. And that was just basically figuring out the area of trunk taken out. Um, so for, and I use an example of twenty-five inch diameter, um, at breast height. That's four hundred ninety-one square inches of, of trunk. If you took a slice, you'd have four hundred ninety-one inches, uh, in area. And if you wanted, if, this was working off the presumption of one-to-one ratio that they said of no net loss. If you use five-inch trees, which would have on just under a twenty-inch area, you'd have to put in twenty-five trees. Which actually sounds like a lot, but it makes it a square inch of trunk to one-to-one. The other would be doing the same thing by, um, by diameters. So, you have a twenty-five inch diameter tree, five, five-inch trees. Gives you a very different ratio. Both, I think, are reasonable ways of looking at replacing the trees that, that are being taken down.
The thing is that what happens when you have a ratio like that is, if you try to do this on site, then you're almost getting back to the situation where you have no development area left. Plus, these trees aren't gonna stay small forever, they're gonna grow. So, again, you're planting, if you're doing twenty-five to one, that's an incredible amount of replanting and you're not gonna have any room for houses or streets or anything else.
Two comments for that. One is yes, the growth factor, they will grow and become larger, so that may change the way you wanna do the ratios. But I also don't necessarily think that they'd have to necessarily be planned, planted on property.
We don't, we don't have mitigation banks or anything else like that. We don't have anywhere designated to take tree planting or any, we, we're not Portland. We don't, we don't have-
Well, even Portland, even Paulsbo had one. Portland has one, Paulsbo had it, Portland had a tree bank, essentially.
If Paulsbo set up some type of tree bank, it's been in the last three years, I'm not aware of that.
They called it a tree fund, or was that Portland, they called it a tree fund?
Are you thinking Olympia?
Tree plant, oh, maybe it is Olympia, sorry. I looked at so many different ones.
Paulsbo may allow you, I don't know, it, it, we didn't have it when I worked there. They may allow you to pay into some kind of fund, but yeah.
Olympia too. Um, but essentially, they had a way of mitigating those, the loss somewhere within the city limits.
And I, you know, I, again, I'm, I'm kind of speaking for Nick since he's not here. But again, our goal is not to keep the canopy in Port Orchard the way it is today. Because we have a lot of rural area, urbanizing area, and are, we, we're mandated to take growth. So, we can't keep it the way it is. It's not gonna be possible. So, we have to strike a balance between ecological benefit, aesthetic benefit, and the development and growth that we're mandated to take. And I think if we're doing twenty-five to one, that isn't gonna, isn't gonna work.
And I'm not necessarily solid on saying that has to be the ratio by any means. I was just throwing these out to illuminate-
To get the conversation started.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
But at the same token, I don't know that I necessarily wanna be like renting, whereas I guess paved. Um, and I look at some of the new housing plants, plats that are going out. I mean, they're clear-cutting the whole thing, plowing it under. And then what goes in is just complete subdivision with no natural growth.
What, what about, I mean, kind of off bit on this, what if, um, like, you know how they did McMinniman's up in Bothell? They did, you know, all those open underground streams and all stuff like that? I mean, they did such a cool way of dealing with clearing it to have parking and whatnot and, you know, you know what I'm talking about, and, but it's still very lush and green. How are they able to do that like that?
Well, if you have a critical area such as a stream and its buffer, you're not gonna be clearing in there anyway. So, that's gonna be required to be preserved.
Those are all opened. It's, it's, I don't know if you've been up there, but we did a tour like two years ago, I guess. But, um, it's beautiful the way they did it. All the streams, they opened them up so you can actually see, and there's parking all around it. It's all very grush, lovely how they did it. Because they had to clear a lot of the trees and so they had to make up for it in other areas. And it was super smart how they were, they were very environmentally conscious and it looks amazing.
I'm going to guess that when they did the McMinniman's, probably, I don't know this, but just looking at that whole area-
Didn't you go on that tour too?
I did.
Yeah.
But I don't know exactly what it looked like before they did the redevelopment.
Yeah, I don't either.
So, I'm gonna guess that that stream was probably highly urbanized and possibly even culverted. And they may have, I think they opened up that stream.
That's right, okay.
So, I think all those trees were cleared. And so, I think they replanted.
Oh.
And so, and restored that stream.
Yeah. But it's, it's gorgeous and very successful.
Yeah, and it, and that's an opportunity. So, when you have, um, a channeled or, or culverted stream that's been degraded, you know, that's always an opportunity here is to go and restore and replant along those streams. And that could always be a, a possibility for off-site mitigation. Um, if you're cutting down trees here to, to plant over here, we just don't have that formal program in place. But McMinniman's is a great opportu-, you know, example.
Get developers to rethink it in a way where they could, you know, I know, you know, they wanna clear it, but how, when you plant it, how can you bring it back so it's still a little bit lush, maybe in certain areas? You know, pockets, I don't know.
But if you've got a pristine site, a forested site, you're not clearing in the stream buffers.
Yeah.
Our, our, our critical areas code will prevent that.
Yeah. I don't know, just thinking out loud, trying to resolve it.
One of the other suggestions I had had was trying to, when they do preserve significant trees, that they are clustered.
Cause that's lovely, it makes sense.
Instead of just a single tree here, single tree, single tree. And I think we talked about that last, last time a bit.
How can you recommend that, though? How can you, how can that be highly encouraged? You, you know what I mean? How do you, I mean, I understand the, the way it's written, cause you have to have some sort of guidelines. You know, and there has to be some sort of replacement. But how can you make them, I don't know, see a, a better vision of, instead of just, we're gonna knock down all these and replace it with those? It's just so, I just think it's not black and white, I guess is what I'm saying.
It, it's not black and white because sometimes, especially when we're talking about small lot residential development, sometimes the worst thing you can do is to try to keep the existing trees. Because, you know, when you have a forested site, if you clear everything around one tree, the, and this was one of your questions, Dave, is, you know, about opening it up, um, to the wind where it had previously been protected, you're now making it vulnerable.
True.
One tree and it's gonna crash on someone's property.
Now, becomes a hazard tree.
Exactly, you've created a hazard tree where it wasn't before. And so-
The reason, cluster them.
Right, and so, you know, it, it, again, sometimes we're better, I, and I know this isn't maybe the, the popular thing to say, but when we have very small lot sites, when it's townhomes, when it's cottage courts, when it's sites like that, we may be better off in the long run, clearing a site outside of critical areas and replanting, except for significant trees.
Process, yeah. I didn't even consider that, you're right. It makes complete sense, cause that'd be terrifying.
And, no, and, and, and it's not always the case. Because sometimes, especially now that we're going to be requiring recreation tracks, um, and because there's gonna be stormwater tracks, critical areas, um, other required setbacks, street trees, there's many opportunities to preserve and retain and even mitigate with replanting. But sometimes, there's gonna be areas, um, especially where you have to take in roads and put in utilities where it makes sense to clear trees from, completely from an area and then replant and restart. And yes, for ten to fifteen years, it's not gonna look that great. It's true. That is true. But we're trying to plan for the long term here. And I'm, I'm not really trying to influence you one way or the other. And I don't mean, I don't mean to make it sound like I am, I just, I'm just, you know.
So, I'm doing, just starting to read through the comments and the reply comments. And I just kinda started at the beginning, cause I kinda get sidetracked. Under the exception, you saw, I threw in a couple of ex, a couple that they hadn't had in that I saw on other-
I'm sorry, where, where are you at now?
I'm on page two now, the one I reviewed. And added in the trees in containers and above ground containers, commercial, most trees for Christmas trees.
We kept that, yeah.
And then the emergencies, which it looks like he had questions about, and what defines an emergency?
Yeah, if we don't have a definition, then pretty much anything in someone's opinion is an emergency.
Right. Then probably need to come up with a definition of emergency or just take it out. But I can see times where, I don't know, leans up against a hot wire or, you know, telephone pole or something. That they could consider that to be an emergency. That's kinda what I was envisioning.
Okay, we, we could, could work on a definition or a-
Dave, the red underline, is that your addition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I added.
I appreciate the level of work you put into this. And I don't know how the rest of the Planning Commission feels and the carry is probably gonna throw a tomato at me.
Here's my tomatoes.
I almost feel like, there's so much here that, I almost feel like tabling it till the next month. I hate to do that.
No, no, it's, it's a lot of new information.
It is.
It is.
Yeah.
Because it's Dave's comments and then it's Nick's responses and then it's a whole separate version that's a compromise version to discuss. So, it's actually, it, it's kind of a new thing that no one's had a chance to really look at. Especially Phil, because he never saw it before tonight, so.
That's all new to him.
Welcome.
So, so this eleven four is the clean compromise version then?
Yes.
The compromise in the sense, not that I'm calling it a compromise, you may not, you guys may not think it's a compromise, but it's what Nick and I put together, is like, well, the staff could rec, the staff could live with this in terms of what Dave was recommending and what Nick thinks is okay. But we could be persuaded otherwise that the Planning Commission thinks that this doesn't work, it's, it's only our initial version. You guys can rewrite that too. You wanna bring it back next month?
I'm sorry?
You wanna bring it back next month?
Please, if we could. Does the rest of the Planning Commission feel comfortable with that or?
Yeah, they're sticking around till nine o'clock.
I don't wanna do that.
How, how would it be best for me to bring it back? Cause I don't think you want redline, compromise, packet. How, how, what format would you like this in?
Oh, my gosh, I don't know.
Well, without really being able to, I don't know, I don't know how to respond to that, I guess.
You know what I thi-, okay, how about this, let me make a suggestion. And Dave, you tell me, if, if I take, and I'll run this through you first. If I take all of your questions or suggestions and I put this into a memo. And I, he's just kinda done it in shorthand, and so I do a response to each one. And I, and then I refer to where we changed something or where we didn't accept a change. And so, you can see where something is different from what was in the packet versus what wasn't. And I explain why it was or wasn't accepted from what you said. And so, then we have, um, a suggested version, but we still have your, your original redline version. So, we could take, we have what's in the packet, we have a memo explaining what you suggested and our responses to it line by line. And then we have, um, something to consider that, that would be a compromise. Would that be helpful?
I think so. And it's very possible that all of these edits may spur other comments.
And that, that's true too, because now you guys may all want to send me an email with...
I, I figured this major Monday morning. Sorry. But I didn't get to work on it till Sunday.
Okay. No, that's great. If you, if any of you have more comments, please send them to me as soon as possible so I can do one memo, one memo. That would be great.
All right, then we will table the tree canopy, significant tree code to next month.
Okay.
To absorb the new information. All right then, so we're moving on to the last business item, five E discussion or recommendation, Shoreline Master Plan, public participation plan and work plan.
Okay, because we are accepting a grant from the Department of Ecology to do our mandated shoreline master program update next year, we are required to adopt, or the city council is required to adopt by resolution a public participation plan, a, a rough schedule, and a work plan for that update process. And so we have prepared that and put this in your packet. And it's not required to be adopted by, there's no public hearing required for this. It just needs to go through you as the body that reviews most planning topics and subjects. You will be review, you will be the, the body that does review the major update materials for the SMP. You will be conducting the primary hearing for the SMP. We will probably have an open house, which is before the planning commission for the SMP. So you really need to be the first ones to see our proposed work plan and timeline that's proposed, even though the council's the one that passes the resolution. So I just wanted to bring this before you to show you what we're going to be doing over the next year to year and a half in terms of what we're going to be putting out there in terms of getting the public involved. The planning commission meetings are where, as it says on the second page, how we're going to be bringing this forward to the public. We will be setting up an email list, we will be setting up a website, we will be doing a lot of social media outreach. We're going to try to do as much as we can online. We're going to try not to do too much that's by mail, by postcard, by the, by the stuff. It really isn't working too well these days. But we hope, like I said, we hope to do a couple of open houses at least as we go through the process, just to make sure. We're going to be coordinating with federal and state agencies as well as the port, the Navy, and the tribes. Most of what we're going to be doing, which is shown in the gap analysis document, is trying to bring our SMP up to date from when it was last adopted, which was in two thousand thirteen. Simply the things where it's kind of become inconsistent with the zoning code, the comp plan, with other state requirements. And there are some things that Ecology wants us to put in here just that, that we haven't incorporated yet. We did a minor update a couple of years ago, and we did address some things in our plan that were a little bit outdated and problematic, but we need to just have, there's a few other things that we just need to kind of fix. The, the major thing that we want to do, and we've already started working on this with Kitsepp County, is we really want to address the topic of climate change and sea level rise for our downtown. This is a minor update to our plan. We're not opening up the whole thing for discussion, we're not changing environment designations all over the place. We're not getting into reanalysis of our shoreline setbacks or building types or anything like that. But we are concerned about our downtown's future on the shoreline and whether we're doing the right thing for, um, what we, what we have in our, in our SMP right now is to what type of building we allow on the, on the downtown shoreline, whether it's setback far enough, whether, what we allow in terms of mitigation on the shoreline and in the estuary of Black Jack.
What was that?
A fly just died on my packet.
Drop out of the sky. That was crazy. It just dropped? Yeah.
That's a bad omen. Excuse me, that was really weird. Um, anyway, so. Sure that if we put in public utilities, if we fix roads, put in new roads, there's a lot of stuff planned for our downtown waterfront over the next ten years, a lot of stuff. The community center that we just got a massive grant for. The big downtown projects that are being planned, potential redevelopment of West Bay, the cheers that's proposed to go in, condos and commercial. We want to make sure that if, if the city and private developers are putting a lot of money into that, that it's safe for the public and that we're not wasting a lot of money. So, and if we, if we do mitigation in Black Jack Creek, if we do a lot of mitigation efforts done in the estuary, is it all going to be washed away with sea level rise? If we put in public parks and trails, you know, are, are we just going to have to redo it, you know, in, in ten or fifteen years? So the county recently proposed to us and to all of the cities in the county that we participate with them in a countywide climate change resiliency study. And I don't know if you saw, it was in the paper actually last weekend about our participation in it. And so we, as well as Bremerton chose to participate in that. So as well as the county doing a big, high-level study of the whole county. And, and it's not just about shorelines, it's about everything. It's about the, you know, the change in climate affecting our, our economic development if we have to charge more for fighting fires, you know, things like that. It's, it's everything. But we said, we would like you specifically, your consultants, to look at our downtown and our shoreline. So we're going to get an appendix in that study, and we should be getting that in January, February.
Awesome.
Yeah, and, and there's, there's, and then they're going to do a little bit of additional work for us also following that that makes, does planning and policy recommendations for us for our SMP.
That's great, especially with that big grant for the community center. It's good, it'll be good to find out.
Yeah, we really need that information.
Absolutely.
Because we just got another grant also from the Department of Commerce, which is to do a downtown subarea plan. And it's also going to address not just the downtown, but also go all the way up the hill and take in all of Kitsepp County's government campus. And that's going to be also incorporating a planned EIS, so that's going to do environmental analysis of the...
How big was that?
Of, I'm sorry?
How big of a grant was that?
Um, that one was for fifty thousand dollars, but I believe the mayor is now going out for additional grant money from other sources, so we're looking at a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total being put into this study to look at the environmental impacts. And not only that, but traffic impacts, all types of, of informational stuff about what will happen with the redevelopment of downtown and the proposed expansion of the county facilities, the new courthouse, the new jail, the new sheriff's office, everything up the hill.
And we went into McCormick Woods.
Yeah, so there's, there's a lot going on. And we want to fold the shorelines into that as much as we can and get as much information as we can now from the grant processes that we have. And so, um, climate change is the big one. That's the one thing that we really want to incorporate into our SMP update at this time. Because we know how much is on Phil, and we know that the tide comes in under those downtown buildings right now. We know, we know how vulnerable we are, and we want to know, you know, what are our public safety liabilities? And what do we need to be planning for? What, what's the condition of our seawall? You know, what, what, you know, and this was not done in the last SMP update, and we think it's time.
Oh, I think it's a smart idea.
Yeah.
Awesome.
So that's where we are, and so we're just asking the planning commission to make a recommendation for approval of this to the, the city council so that we can get our grant money released from Ecology and start work.
Awesome. Do the planning commission have any more questions for Carrie or any further discussion on this topic?
Course is in trouble.
Course is definitely in trouble.
That's about trees. Downtown trees.
Do I have a motion?
Sure.
All right, I get the last one. You guys?
I move to recommend that the city council approve the resolution adopting the shoreline master program, update public participation plan, tentative schedule, and work plan as presented.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion, Carrie.
Thank you.
All right. So that wraps up business items, and I think we can adjourn. It is seven thirty, November fifth, two thousand nineteen.
All right, thank you.
Yay.
Clunk your gavel, lady.
Congratulations, Madam Chairwoman.